We'll call Scottsboro Work Session Monday, March 2nd to order a dedication given by Mr. Bailey and the pledge of allegiance given by Mike Cashburn.
Let us pray. Father God, thank you for today, Lord of the heavens. We love you and just thank you for the many blessings you give us. Lord, we just ask you to look over this meeting tonight and Lord, just guide and direct us in all these things. In Jesus' name I pray.
Our political agents stood alive in the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're gonna add one on to the work sessions. All right. We'll go to item number one, discuss the casting and catching tourism grant application. Mayor is here.
Yeah, Katie's out here. Last year, Drew McNutt applied for a $5,000 tourism grant application for the casting and catching for children's about a month of the fishing tournament. He's got another application in front of me. The date of the man is April 25th of this year, and he's asking, it's all plant or here, $5,000 to cover expenses towards that benefit term that's coming up.
Anyone have any questions? Comments? No, we'll put it on the agenda. Go to item number two, discuss the purchase of fireboats. I know we've talked about this. Gene, do you want to start first?
I can touch on a few things. I know that you asked goose pond representation and wild matter here, so we appreciate that. Maybe refer to them once. I'll start out saying we did go to the commission work session this afternoon along with the mayor. The mayor spoke with them. I don't wanna speak for them, and obviously they were in a work session like you, so there wasn't any action, but I felt like they're willing to participate with us and cooperate with us. There weren't any kind of commitments, certainly not any commitment about money, but the dialogue is open. I can speak to them, so it would be wrong for me to say anymore about what they may or may not do. I don't know. In terms of goose pond, and that was a concern last night, I'll let him if he likes, but we spoke some, we've emailed some. They've been super in terms of being cooperative and willing to do whatever we need to do, and they understand the need as much as we've had events at Goose Pond. So they understand the need, and they've been great in terms of that, as far as that goes. But if you'd like to, or if you would like to, for him to speak, I'll add that.
As far as goose pond position, we'll support anything we need to do to help make the project work. Gene and I talked about a few things, just throwing some ideas around. As far as having a boat on the property complex there, that's actually probably all.
So y'all have a location in Sable, the second from the dock.
We've definitely got one that we've worked, and then Gene and I talked about another idea to addition to that. We don't, I think Gene doesn't, nobody thinks it needs to be existing dock one, two, three, or four, six, right? We've talked about the transient dock, and we've talked about potentially just a complete separate location from that too. From a logistics standpoint, we talked about, you know, where's the truck gonna get to? Where's it gonna park? What's gonna be here for the guys to access it? You know, we even talked about possibly one of those floating pads up to fill the jets to young. Gene's even looking into that a little bit, and there's stuff like that available that could give us even a better access point. We'll work out whatever we need to work out for you guys, so.
So, yeah, we've talked about this, and as this thing progresses, we fully expect to do some, quote, dry runs, just to see where the access will be, quick access, place that we can, you know, feel like the boat's secure against the weather and everything else that might happen sometimes, like, so. But storage on the water, and to one point, and I was in meetings last week concerning marine fires, not specifically marina fires, but more on commercial side of things, and people from Knox County all the way to Florence, but Tennessee River, the Grand Canyon Tennessee, and you're talking about a seven or eight minute at a minimum to get a boat in action anywhere you go. That includes Knoxville, that includes Chattanooga, I mean, we have plenty of boats and plenty of resources. So we feel like we can put a pretty good plan together that's gonna be within the standard of what's expected and what's out there, based on where we're taking this direction. Just more to the boat, I think, the board, no, that's right, I was wrong. More to the boat itself, I've had a couple of conversations, and we have identified a few different vendors. Obviously, I'm working from one particular quote, one particular idea for this discussion purpose, and that was actually a vessel and a company we identified years ago that made a good product as I first started thinking about this, and I'm glad the rescue squads here, they have some of the same products from the same company. So there's some advantages to that. But the boat is a specifically built, custom built, to do what it's designed to do, which is not fire. This particular model, and there's others like it, have movable, removable seats and different customization or configurations you can do inside the actual thing, where the fire pump can actually come out, be replaced by a seat or all that, depending on what you need to carry. So right now, we're really focused on fire, and rightfully so, but boats also serve a rescue purpose that we can accommodate with boats of this nature. So I just, I don't want the impression that this is a pontoon boat with a pump strapped on the front of it. I mean, it's made to do what it's doing, and it's made to do it well, so. Other than that, I mean, you know where we are as much as I do, so any more questions or anything y'all thought of over the last couple of weeks that I can possibly answer or chase down?
I've got a few things. First, you know, if this boat should just sit there, is there a way to, you know, block off the dock if it's gonna be on?
My, my, my.
How many people are out there? I mean, we live in a city on this.
Sure. Well, there'll be some, and there's some ways to do that. Some of the things that Matt and I discussed were, you know, the possibility of a, I don't know what you wanna call it, but almost an equipment shed, a small equipment shed on one side, on the front side of this platform that we were discussing, that's an option. My thought was, if, at least from the land side, I mean, anybody can swim under or around anything, but from the land side, some type of securable gate, just to keep kids or whatever out. Goose ponds are fairly proactive, or at least they always have been, they were when I was a kid, about having a patrol. So, I'm just saying, I hear stories, so. But, yeah, we have considered that as some way to secure the boat and, and, um...
The second thing is, I have to talk with you, you know, I've been looking at maybe three guys on this boat.
Two.
And equipment, and I'm looking at the options on this particular boat.
Sure.
And I would definitely wanna see you do the larger motor, because, I mean, I think that would be a big plus. When you start putting that many people on one boat and all that equipment, it can make a big difference. A 115 to a 150 is a big difference.
But they've got an extra 30 to 100% horsepower. What do y'all have on that 16?
We only have 30s.
Oh, really? Yeah. So, which, those aren't carrying pumps, so that's a little bit different situation. No, I agree with that 100%. Obviously, I was putting, throwing this together.
The difference here?
Throwing this together because I, you know, felt like we needed to do something. I felt like it was not necessarily gonna be easy. This is actually what I used a lot back. So the 150 boats are rated for up to a certain horsepower, and the maximum on this particular hold is 150, but I think that would be an appropriate idea if we're willing to do that, because we do have a lot of water to cover. And doing so in an emergency situation, safe speed, but speed is over the limit.
One of the things, we talked about it previously at a meeting, and then Gene and I talked about, you know, as we're considering this, I would like to see him go ahead and get a bid package together and put it out for bid, because the time he gets the document prepared and we advertise it, put it out, submit it to potential bidders, and actually open it, we're not even bound to purchase, but, you know, that's a month-long process in itself.
That's, I was just looking at my calendar to see, because it, just to your point, Mayor, that that's...
That's exactly, yes. That's, you know, just being proactive as we, because, you know, we've gotten a quote from one company, but there might be two or three others, and Gene's been around these different vendors in the rescue squad, so, you know, it's, you know, it's just moving forward, and then let's see where it shakes out.
And if you guys are good with it, I would love to put a package, stack package together, proposal package, and start accepting bids on a turbo price, and then whenever those are final, you guys can evaluate that and the rest of the situation.
Is there any way we can give a permit from the county on what they are going to do? If we're gonna purchase these two boats at 120,000, you know, as far as the structure goes, you know, utilities or that structure, can we get something together?
I think we can, while we're doing the bid package, because the bid package is gonna be per boat, and we can, you know, we can shore that side out, so to speak.
And again, to, just to reclarify, that both of these boats will be property of Scottsboro Fire Department, the county, they'll be operated by Scottsboro Fire Department, the county will pay for the money, and if that's just happening, pay for it, we would still have the ownership.
Exactly. And today, as I addressed the commission, I was addressing it from storage at County Park, in that, that, you know, in a separate dock or something. And if they chose at some point to participate and make a donation towards it, it's still, like you said, our, you know, it's just a donation towards the project as a whole.
Right. And something I wanna make clear too, it's not just, you know, full County Park, it's covering that entire area you're going in, you know.
A lot of Roseberry, current.
Absolutely. There's, I tried to count them all the time, and I run out of count fingers, but somewhere, again, north of 400 boat houses, the large majority of those are in Roseberry. So we do have a lot of private residential-type boat houses there that deserve some degree of protection and response. Frankly, we have some places on the island that, you know, we, depending on the situation, we may have to cover land and from water.
Yes.
So, you know, again, that's, there's a lot of area to cover there, and a lot of recreational boat that also requires response, and so, for the council's knowledge, there's been some discussion and conversation about who would and wouldn't operate a vessel or have access to. My position is that that should be limited, just from a maintenance, from a insurance, from all sorts of levels. That needs to be trained personnel, you know, eight times out of ten, two times a dawn, we're really hanging ourselves out. So I don't think that's a very good way to ownership, take full responsibility for operation maintenance and everything, and don't allow any sort of partnership of that.
Anybody else for you? Thank you.
Thank y'all.
So, he will be moving forward, but you heard where your aspect goes. My apologies.
Good item number three, discuss Kentbury Worker, the solid waste department.
Well, Stacy here, Arrington, I mean, we've got a worker, solid waste, that's out of workman's comp, gonna be having surgery, his salary, I guess, as far as the city's concerned, be covered in the workman's comp, and we're asking to hire a temporary worker to fill that slot while he or she is out on workman's comp, so that we don't become short-staffed.
And personally, would be filling that if we did approve it, that they do know that they are temporary?
Yes, if they advertise that one.
Anybody have any questions? Arrington, anything to add to that?
I believe that you know that I had read from Stacy, he said it was like a six-week period while this person is out for a second year? It would be advertised as a six-week period.
Based on council's experience in that last year.
I think so.
Any options, lady? We'll put that on next week's agenda. Go to item number four, discuss surplus of solid waste property.
The solid waste department has property that they would like to surplus, 2005 International 7600 and 96 Mac DM 69 OS and a 2007 Sterling Condor. They would like to place days on gov deals, but the money received, put back into the solid waste bracket.
Any questions on that? No, we'll put it on next week's agenda. Good item number five, discuss KPS envoys. Mayor, you wanna cover this?
Well, this is another invoice from KPS. Ms. Ivy and Mr. O'Leary's have looked over it, and they're in agreement that services have been rendered.
Question? Any questions on that? Jim, do you have, you have anything to add to that?
Everything's good.
Are we still splitting those invoices?
Yes.
And it's my understanding, as everything proceeds as planned, they end up putting the project out for bid towards the end of the month, correct?
Yes, yes. Hopeful. Wow, that's great. We'll put that on next week's agenda as well. Good item number six, discuss the procurement policies and procedures. Mayor, do you wanna talk about that?
I'll defer to Rick. We met. I don't know if Mr. Campbell's had a chance to...
All right. Yes. We met and discussed some policy that we had written up, and came up with some adjustments to that we were gonna make to it. The information that you have in your packet is with the adjustments that we had discussed. So if you would look at that, and I would talk about it again. One of the big items is on page 11, down at the bottom, there was an exception for the maintenance department, vehicle maintenance department on. And I think we changed some of the numbers to better suit our needs.
The changes in here that are undermined, is that what we had discussed in our meeting?
What?
But undermine the orders?
I don't know.
Oh, okay. Have any more changes, Rick?
Mr. Campbell did, I believe.
I could start off on page three. There is a vision that authorizes email authorization by three council members with notification of all council members. I think this is very likely, a violation of the old meetings law, and we recommend that that section be taken out. I know the courts have ruled that conference calls such as this are not authorized. And I think the next logical conclusion would be, conference calls unauthorized, an email is not authorized. So I would recommend that section be taken out. Also, page 16, Whitney asked me to review C, D, and E, which has to do with the lengths of time that certain leases, contracts, and lease purchases may take place. What I think we have down here right now is the pretty standard length of time that's authorized by statute. I think we could probably shorten that by saying leases, contracts, and lease purchase agreements shall not be longer than the period of time authorized by the state statute.
Yes.
Other than that, I have no problems with it.
Will you have anything else?
Probably like those. Changes, and Jen, send it out to you, man.
Please do that. Anybody else have any questions for them? Rick? Thank you. We'll put that on next week's agenda with the, with the changes. Good item number seven, Scottsboro Jackson County Rescue Squad grant application. Katie, you wanna talk about it?
Sure. What we're asking for this year is some grant about the tourism money, the head of our vast tournament. It'll be April 11th. We have moved it out a month this year, hoping for some more better weather. In years past, we've had people from as far away as Illinois. We have a group committed from...
Indiana's, right?
Yeah, from Indiana this year to come in. One of the reasons that we've been able to draw like this is that it's one of the largest payout tournaments in the county, local tournaments. Obviously, we don't, we don't compete with a big backlash and some of these out-of-towners, but as far as a local tournament, we try to start this, this is our ninth year, and start out with a, kinda with a bang to help draw people in. We made that mistake about 30 years ago with El Rodeo, and started out real slow, and had to work our way up, and we chose this time to do it differently, try to start on a high. Our big thing is trying to advertise it everywhere we can, and that's what we're asking for funding for.
Have we ever given before?
No.
We got 25 left.
Two years ago.
I know I don't have a boat, but as much as they do for us, if we, I know our tourism fund is getting low, but if we need to give it out of sales tax, I think it's a great investment.
When does that deposit come in, Rick?
Sorry?
I was asking Mr. Hoiter back there behind you. When does that deposit come in for the tourism grant?
The next one will go in probably the first of July.
I would just pull it up. Yeah, I think two months' sales tax will be there.
Anyone else have anything? We'll put it on next week's agenda.
One thing I like to say, since I'm up here, I really appreciate what y'all are working on, Gene, on this part, but it's you. We thought a long time that that's a need, even after the event a couple of weeks or a few weeks ago, even our guys wanted to do it. It's like, we're not in the business, that's not what we do. But we're very supportive of that, of that idea, and I hope, I hope it'll make that come.
Thanks. Thanks, Michael. Should say Brenda Hadi.
I won't take up a lot of time. Mr. O'Leary's and the mayor mentioned moving forward on our project, and I really haven't talked to you or given you an update since right after the first of the year. We feel like that it's been almost a year. We have not pushed, we have taken our time. Mr. O'Leary's has been great to help us. I've found in trying to read blueprints, it's very difficult to do. I can look at a drawing, but when it gets down to electrical, plumbing, and mechanical, the cross-sections and all of that, that's just a little out of my nutrition area. So with his help, he has helped us to understand where we are, where we're going, and the product that we will have when we finish. We hope, after we have a meeting with KPS tomorrow, to discuss some of the things in the drawings that we have, to make sure that we're all on the same page. We hope those bid documents are gonna be out in two weeks. We don't want to wait until the end of the month. We're anxious to get this done, to get it done right, not come back to you after the bid has gone out and things have been approved with change orders. We have looked at those things, we have studied them, we've asked for his input, he's been gracious enough, working with us women, that he has listened to us. We have argued at times, but we have come to a consensus of what would be best for the building that we are getting. We could not have done any of this without his help, and his volunteering to take this on has been greatly appreciated. He deserves a big pat on the back, and he will get that from our board, but from the citizens too, for the things that he does. But we're excited, we think it's going to be a beautiful building, it's going to be a very useful building, it's going to allow us to have exhibits and programs that we have not been able to do before, and it also will be an asset to the community for their community use. So we're excited, we're anxious to get this finished, to get it out for bids, to get it back, and see where we are, and to move forward. And we appreciate every one of you supporting it and being there with us, and we hope you will be there to shovel that first shovel of dirt when we do our ground fighting.
I'm here to talk about a pet peeve I have, I think the mayor does have the same one, probably most of y'all, and that's litter. And we've got an issue that's ever-growing in Scottsboro area, and the city is litter, and there's a lot of it, and it's not going away. And the, we've helped, the help we've had in the past has been, that source is drying up. So it's really not anybody out there to take on the effort of something I watch growing weekly, and he's there, especially if you're approaching Scottsboro on our highways and byways leading into the businesses, into the downtown areas, and most traveled areas in Scottsboro. And I just said, well, we gotta do something. And so, you know, I took it on myself on our own, leading out, and I have four miles, and I take care of it weekly, and the way more came to clean it up initially, and I said, if you'll take care, get it all cleaned up, I'll make it. And I said, if you'll take care, get it all cleaned up, I'm making it. So I do that. And, but I see this reoccurring, you know, and I go, golly, that's just... And I get to drive around the city and looking, and it's pretty bad when you go to Huntsville and you come back home and get to look around, you're Scottsboro, all of a sudden, just trash. And it's getting pretty heavy coming in from about every area, coming into town. And so, what do we do, fix it? So, I said, well, I'll find a bunch of other guys, I'm a self-tires, need some extra activity and some exercise, and do that. So I talked to the mayor and, uh, Mr. Moore, and I've got good support from both of them. And I want to put together a group of retired guys, or whoever wants to participate, volunteers, that will get together, and we'll decide whether it's going to be one week out of the month or whatever, the group and supply the vest, the headgear, the items, the grabbers to pick up trash, the bucket, and stuff for everybody, and make it into an outing, but something done to beautify Scottsboro and keep it, it's a pretty town. But this, when you drive in, you start seeing this litter down the side of the highways and the bridges, and this stuff floating in water, you know, and you just go, we got to stop at somewhere and try, at least try. And so, I'm hoping I can get the backing of the council and help me. I thought I'd use the newspaper to set up a time. I proposed this coming Thursday at 1:00 at the Coliseum here. See anybody interested that wants to help and volunteer their time, and come meet some new people and camaraderie, and make it into a fun thing. Go out there, it's a pretty good deal at the end of the day, when you start at one point and get down to the other end, it's no more like mowing the yard, you know, what's hard to get finished, and look back some more tree. That makes good, what's the same with that litter? When you make a sweep, and you turn around and look, and look back for four, you know, it makes you feel pretty good about what you just did. And so, I hope to be able to get enough people interested that want to participate, to have the time during the week. Well, I like to do this during weekdays with the lowest amount of traffic, and stuff like this, that we can get out, get it done safely, and, uh, make everything pretty again. Try to stay up with it as best we can, and, uh, Wayne Moore does a terrific job, and I'm, he's working with him, and so we can, uh, see if we can get his help when we're making a sweep, and get his vehicle to pick up the bags and actually move along, and just make it a joint effort. Get the same thing, he might notice what he didn't spot, say, hey, let's, let's go over here and get this one done. Let's get this cleaned up. So we're going to keep an eye out, and everybody's got input, y'all included, saying, hey, this is looking pretty bad over here. It's worse than in the spring when the mowers come. And all that underlying trash is sitting there, and when they go through and it's all over the place, it becomes confetti. It even looks worse than when it is. I like to get a kind of a jump on that, and try to get to some of these places, and get that stuff up before that happens, but maintain these areas at the end of the city. And our roof areas are just, uh, I'm tired of looking at it. And, uh, that's all I got to say. Appreciate y'all still. Thank you.
I can also, I appreciate Mr. Brady coming forward more than anything, taking the initiative to do that. But I would think that we could, whatever, however many people he gives, if he would come back to us, they asked whatever they need, I don't think we would.
We've already talked through, we're going to furnish supplies, vests, and just bags.
The, uh, there's already a program over at the courthouse, I think it's through a deck, where they will furnish the bags. Just kind of keep up with how many bags of trash is used, and they furnish the supplies.
Wayne's done a real good job, he supplies me with, I take care of Cleveland's Road, so he's kept me with bags, and I sell them up, and then I have a dumpster down there that we use. But I want to kind of use the, this as a sounding board, because I know it's through the paper that they advertise about, this is coming Thursday at 1:00 p.m. Right here, we're going to have a sign-up sheet, everybody wants to participate, and so we can size for vests and things like this as well.
I'll check, I'll check over at the courthouse, see what supplies that they already have that they furnish.
Okay.
They're, they're part of this part of county too.
Thank you. Mr. Brady?
Mr. Brady? Yes? In this room?
Yes.
Yes, in this room?
He is here.
He reserved, he got what he would reserve.
Good report, Mayor?
Uh, the only thing else I've got to add, Mr. Weddell and I did address the county commission, had a work session about, uh, them to consider, uh, closing County Road 412 that runs right through the landfill at the end of that sale construction. So we started some dialogue there, which would allow us to place gates at the property lines, and then it would be open during the day for trucks coming either direction. So we started some dialogue with the county. We discussed that in a solid waste meeting. That's all I have to mention.
Thank you. Mr. Ashburn?
We had some complaints here a while back on the recycling containers and all over on Vaughn Jones, and I think Stacy did it anyway. And it looks good over by the market now. It really made a big difference. And another thing, just want to remind everybody that tomorrow's the day to go vote. And if you vote here in Scottsboro, there's going to be a little change. Uh, it's going to be at the gym in the middle of the building, instead of the one over on Parks Avenue side. Want to thank you, Vaughn, helping get that change made. We, we've had some incidents where people were injured at the other one, and I think this will make it better for the elderly and handicapped to be able to get in there a lot easier and safer. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Stewart?
I just want to thank everyone for coming tonight. Yes, please go out and exercise your right to vote. That's an important thing that we do as systems. A lot of people fought and died for their right for us to be able to do that. Just keep that in mind, and make sure that other people know, it is the day to go vote. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey?
Just want to thank everybody for coming. I also want to thank the rescue squad for being here tonight. Appreciate all of them. Go above and beyond, appreciate y'all.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey?
Johnson, give us an update on the snow rice again, when it's going to be?
I advertised it last Friday, and we said advertise again this Friday. It's going to be at March 31st, 2:00.
And once it is, what kind of timeframe are we looking at, starting 30 days?
Well, no, probably not that quick. We'll probably have to, you know, run through the council, and get it approved, and get the contract, and get it on their schedule. Probably realistically, probably three months.
Just thank everyone for coming out. I know we've got a lot here tonight, the weather's been bad, but it's always good to have a little chance. Thank you, it's all good.
Thank you.
I just want to, I want to thank Jim for everything that you do, volunteer your time on these boards and helping us out with some of these projects. Just want to thank, and one thing, Matt and Lyle for what the job y'all do in Goosevine. I know y'all have a board, and we changed that board out since 2012. I've been on the council, we've had a lot of different faces on there, and y'all really made a huge impact where you were and where you are now. And it's leadership, it's on the board, and Lyle, with your head as well, so, with your leadership. And one is thank Mike for really pushing that to change where you vote. I know you were very instrumental in doing that, and you brought it up, spoke, and formed a committee, and you got it done. So I appreciate that. And just to remind everybody to go out and vote tomorrow. And that would turn, thank y'all for it.